It's January 28th, 2021. I want to welcome everybody to the city council meeting. We probably have a lot of, lot to talk about tonight. I want to welcome our guest, Helen West, Helen Day World, Rick Kennedy, and I think KJW usually joins us. And any other media guests that I don't see and any other guests we don't, I don't see. But I do see a quorum. So I'm going to call this meeting to order and ask Ms. Ramsey to call the row.
Davis. St. Columbia. Mr. Joe.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Crockett.
Here.
Franklin. Etherly.
Here.
Forward.
Here.
Four yes and two absent.
Okay, so we have a quorum. Ms. Ramsey, do you have any minutes for us?
You have, you have three sets of minutes. The council had them in their packet. It's December 22nd, January 5th, and January 12th. So if you've had time to read them, like, would somebody make a motion for December the 22nd, please? And let me know if there's any changes.
So St. Columbia, I'll make a motion that we accept council meeting minutes, December 22nd, it's printed.
Mr. St. Columbia moves the minutes to December 22nd. Is there a second?
Second, final reading.
Second.
I think Mr. Earl was taking into the motion, meeting discussion, if not call the row.
Etherly.
Yes.
Forward. Yes. Davis. Crockett.
Yeah.
Franklin. St. Columbia.
Yes.
Okay, those are carried. The next one's the minutes of January the 5th, 2021.
Joe St. Columbia, those that we accept the minutes of January the 5th, third final reading.
Mr. St. Columbia moves final adoption of minutes of, or adoption of minutes of February the 5th. Is there a second? As, as printed?
January the 5th.
Sorry. Is there a second? February 5th. One more time. Is there a second for adoption of the minutes of February 5th?
January 5th.
January 5th.
What, February? Getting ahead of myself. January 5th.
I'll second.
How long is that to you?
Yeah, I'll give the second, but I, I don't, I don't know. I'm trying not to. If, if nobody else has given a second, I don't know if they've read them or not. And we have people just joining, so. I don't want to leave the motion hanging, so I'll second.
I seconded, seconded, I guess, right before you, but that's fine.
Okay, okay. Yeah.
Okay. All right, motion is second. Any discussion? If not called row.
St. Columbia.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Davis. Etherly.
Yes.
Forward. Crockett. Okay, Crockett. Okay, thank you. Five yes. And the next one is the minutes of January the 12th, 2021.
Somebody else have to do that.
Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes of January 12th?
Have two days.
I, I have not reviewed those. I'm just taking a quick scan of them.
I have.
Well, we don't. Okay, well, we don't have to force that, so let's, let's just wait and do that.
I've read the minutes and so moved that we accept the minutes of January the 12th. Everybody is present.
Okay, Mr. Ms. Ford moves that we adopt the minutes of January 12th, right?
Yes.
2021. Is there a second? You might want a second.
I'll second him.
Mr. Etherly makes the motion to adopt the minutes for January 12th. Is there any discussion? If not, call.
Franklin.
Just ask everybody.
Mr. Franklin. Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Mr. Etherly.
Yes.
Mr. Forward. Yes. Ms. Crockett.
Yeah.
Mr. St. Columbia.
Yeah.
Mr. Franklin.
Yes.
Okay, that's all yes.
Motion approved. So we've adopted the minutes from January the 12th. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the treasurer's report. Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner, are you on?
Yeah, we sent the treasurer's report out Monday. There's nothing in particular that I wanted to discuss, but I'm open for any questions that the councilman may have.
Questions from Mr. Turner on the treasurer's report.
Yes, sir. Mr. Turner, this is Chris Franklin. How you doing this afternoon?
Good.
Uh, for, for the, the money we receive on the, with the CARES Act, how much money do we have left from that fund?
From that money?
Yes, sir. How much would we have left?
I'm not sure. We deposited that money into general fund, so I haven't been, I mean, that's for general use. So, uh, like I said, it was kind of as part of general, as part of general fund.
Okay.
So I don't have to look. I don't have the statement in front of me. Right now, but I. Tell you how much we have in. If you have this, if you have your, uh, treasurer's report in front of you now.
I, 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 I do, I do not.
I don't have it in front of me. I'd say that, that money went into general fund. And so I haven't been. I, if you're asking about if the, um, like, we've been segregating funds, just counting things that regularly against that fund, those funds we have. So those.
Okay, so reason why, excellent, trying to see where are we, you know? That's what I, what, what I'm trying to, what, I'm going to tell you straight blunt again when I'm getting them. Whatever that, whatever money is left, that money we have, now, let's be honest, because, you know, we're hearing all these things about defund and all this. Now, we would not have that kind of savings if we did not receive that money, right?
That contributed to the savings that we have.
Okay, right. Okay, so when you look at.
That was a big, they had a significant impact on the amount of money that we had, that we were able to save. Yes, that's true.
Right, right. So, so now, can you be right to say, um, with overtime, right? Can you tell me?
In particular?
Yeah, with, with overtime. I, I, I mean, can you, can you, can you give me, uh, the police overtime? What is, what is the, what is the, what is the number, the cash amount that we spent on overtime last year?
Last year?
Yeah. How much? Yes, sir, last year.
I'm trying to find my report, Mr. Franklin.
Okay.
Hold on, give me a second.
And Mr. Turner, why, why are you looking for it? And can you tell me what was budgeted last year?
Okay, I can, I can tell you that a hundred thousand was budgeted.
Okay.
Yeah, but, uh, of course, you know, you guys amended that, that land item throughout the year.
Okay.
So, um, so those that have the treasurer's report on page, page eight, um, says that the overtime for the police department was a hundred seventy-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Okay, so. So didn't the city council approve that?
Yeah, they, they amended the appropriations to reflect whatever that, those, uh, that expenditure was.
And do you also remember when the, uh, the state came in and gave us some more money during the Easter storm? They gave like twenty or thirty thousand dollars to add to that amount to help with police? Right, so is, is this included in a hundred and seventy-four thousand?
Yes.
So that's included. Okay, now, this is, this is overtime, right?
Yes.
So this overtime, now, we're not fully staffed, we're not going to get it. Okay. So what, what is the police's budget? What, what, what was our overall budget last year? What do we budget for them? What's in the budget for them? Is it 1.2 or a million in it? What, what is that?
For the entire budget.
For the, for, for the entire budget?
For the police department.
For the police department?
Two, or two point seven, two point, approximately 2.6 million, because what I'm looking. Yeah, the treasurer's report says 2.7, but I know we made some, well, take, take that seventy-four thousand dollars out.
Okay, take, okay, all right.
A six, something million.
Okay, so, 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 let, let's be fair. So what I'm trying to get is this. We spent the city, this city council, that's Ms. Davis, Ms. Crockett, Mr. Anthony, Mr. St. Columbia, and myself, right? This city council approved two, two million dollars for that department, right?
Yes.
And Ms. So with, with, with that spending two million dollars for probably 12 officers, you would say?
Through, I don't know how, the total amount that they had throughout the year. So I don't know what, what was the highest amount that they had in a given time.
Okay, so, so, okay.
Yes.
Okay, that, that's the police. Okay, let me ask this question. So there's two million, so our budget is, is. So can, can you tell me this? What is the whole budget for the whole city, hell, the West Ham? What is the total projected number?
In 20?
Yes, sir.
And like I said, we made some adjustments.
Yes, sir.
What I'm going to do is include the adjustments that we made. Okay, that would be about, that would be uh, seven million, seven hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars.
So since she, okay, that's the tot- total budget. Since you've been treasurer, you have watched, you have watched, uh, uh, this decline from 10 to nine, to where we are now, right? So what, what I'm getting at is we spent two million dollars on police, right? I didn't, I didn't count fire because, oh, I don't, I'm, I'm just talking about police right now. So you mean, Tim, we got, this is what I'm trying to get everybody to get drawn out. You got two million dollars for, for a department that's not even fully staffed. You said two million dollars. That's, I mean, I mean, that's what, what people see. Out of seven million dollars, th- this city council spent seven, five, two million dollars out of a seven million dollar budget. So can I ask you this question? On administration? How, what is the administration? What, what are they, what, what did they budget last year? For admin, that's what. What, what they budget? So remember, police is two million.
1.3 million.
1.3 million. Okay. Can you explain? Who, who else, I mean, those, who, who already tells it, it then tells everything like paper, supplies, all those things?
Salaries, wages, papers, supplies.
Okay, so, so when you say salary, how many salaries, how many salaries with that in admin? How many salaries are we talking about? Are we talking about nine? Are we talking about 12? Are we talking 20, 25? How many are we talking about? This includes benefits as well.
Yeah, we will count the 10 elected officials and one, two, three, four, up, four, five additional employees. I'd say between somewhere around 15 to 16 employees.
16. So, okay, so.
Let me interrupt you just a second to say that you're, you're going into budget questions and they're good questions, but this is the treasurer's report and we have.
And I understand, that's, that's why we're.
I'm just, I'm just telling you, you gotta stick to the, the issue on the. Those are good questions. Please ask them, but this is not the point to ask all of those questions.
Okay, let me say this, Mayor. Excuse you, because this is called a city council meeting. I don't ever, I didn't interrupt you. So I'm asking the treasurer questions that need to be answered. So you, you, you can just, let, let me ask this question, because we can have a city council meeting without the mayor. Note that. This is called a city council meeting. You don't. I, I, I didn't ask you. I didn't ask you that. You, you make, you make these meetings hard. I have the floor. 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 I was speaking to Mr. Turner. We're talking, we're talking, we're talking about a treasurer's report. See, you know that you're going to be exposed, so shut up and let me finish talking to Mr. Turner.
Mr. Franklin, you don't run the meeting. You're a council member, but you won six. You're one, yes, actually I do.
We don't need you. It's called a city council meeting. You just, we, we, if, if, if enough of us get off the call, you can't have a meeting. If you get off the call, we can still have a meeting. So, Mr. Mayor, I have the floor. I was asking, you can't, you can't, you can't, I didn't say I.
You don't run this meeting. You don't run this meeting.
And let me finish with Mr. Turner.
You have to.
Be quiet and let me finish with Mr. Turner. Let me finish with Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner. Mr. Turner. So what I'm asking.
Franklin, we're about to meet you. If you, now, if you don't listen to the, if you don't listen to the agenda.
I'm talking to Mr. Turner.
Where gone? I don't care who you're talking to. You must stick to the agenda and you must follow the rules.
I move, we adjourn.
You are not special. You don't get special. You get, you, you have the right to be a city council member. You do not have the right to run this meeting. So you will stick to the agenda and you will ask your questions when it's the appropriate time. Do you have any more questions about the treasurer's report?
Yes, I do.
The treasurer's report.
Yes, I do. I told, I do. I move, we adjourn.
I don't recognize your motion. Okay, are there any other questions? Are there any other questions? It's not a favorite motion. I don't recognize it. And I'm asking if there's any other question about, are there any other questions about the treasurer's report?
Questions about finance, go to the treasurer. His questions are about finance. I don't think you can, you can determine that he has to ask them at a certain portion of the meeting. The treasurer is giving his report and he's asking quite, question to the treasurer. I think it's entirely appropriate.
They're not about the treasurer's report. They're about items that were in the audit that are on our website. They're about items that are in the, items that are in the budget. There are items in last year's budget. It's not about the treasurer's report. And I disagree with you, Mr. Etherly.
He's the treasurer. He's the person.
Are there any other questions about this treasurer's report?
Yeah, I need to ask, Mr., is, is, uh, attorney, the city attorney on this line?
Yes, ma'am, I'm on the line.
Can you give me an opinion about what the mayor is saying?
Well, the treasurer has a duty to, to, to be candid with the city council and offer reports. And anything concerning the finances of the city with, uh, fair game for them to ask, uh, he's the treasurer. He's supposed to absolutely and candidly advise the council of what the finances are. So I think Mr. Ethel is correct that anything that he asks about the finances is germane to the, to the treasurer's report. The treasurer has the floor and they're asking financial questions.
Mr. Valid, finances are not on the agenda. The treasurer's report is on the agenda. Finances are definitely appropriate to ask about, but that's not what's on the agenda.
It's one and the same, Mayor.
It, his exclusive job is relating to keeping up with the finances of the city. And he has a duty to lay a report before them every month. And as part of that duty, he's laid it before them and Mr. Franklin is asking about those things. He can ask them now. He can ask them during the time for, for, for the financing. But these are all financial questions for which Mr. Turner should be able to just answer. And just go, go forward. If he doesn't answer the question, we can move on to the next thing.
Well, but we can't talk about all the other issues that deal with finances, dealing specifically with his report. The other issue is about finance, but all of those are all fine questions. Nothing wrong with those questions. It's just not the time to ask them. The questions are about this treasurer's report. That's what's on the agenda, not the finances, the treasurer's report.
Mayor.
The treasurer. The treasurer's report encompasses the finances.
Can I say this, uh, Mr. Valley and Mr. and the mayor? Okay, so we could conclude the treasurer's report and then when we get to the portion, when they, when we come to the portion with, that deals with the budget, then I'll answer all questions about the budget that they.
Thank you, Mr.
I have a question. Wait, can I ask a question?
Yeah, but I just want Mr. Franklin to know.
But, no, but, no, but this without, okay, go ahead.
Oh, yes, no, I was, I was just saying it about Mr. Franklin. What was your question?
No, my thing is, if two attorneys have told y'all that this is appropriate, how does the mayor determine when we talk anyway? Because I'm like, Mr. Franklin, and I'm not trying to be rude or anything. He cannot monopolize this meeting until people want to talk about something. It has been determined that the questions that Mr. Franklin are asking are legitimate and they can be asked at this time. So what difference if we talk about it now, if we talk about it in the third minute?
I'm willing to answer the question at any point in time. So it's, I, I don't have a problem with it.
The, the difference is that they have to be germane to the item on the agenda.
And that finances are in the treasurer's report. You don't, must don't understand what finance, it's finances, Mayor, it's finances. That's all we saying.
Well.
Now, you've got two legal opinions and you still think that you're right. You're not.
Here, here's the thing.
I'm just trying to move the meeting along and keep it, and keep it moving along so that we can conduct our business. And, and, and those questions are, there's nothing wrong with any of those questions, but this is not the time and place to talk about issues that are on audit that are about last year's budget. And then he asked several questions and he got several answers, but they weren't.
But how do you determine when the time is? That's what I'm trying to say. How, like I said, can you tell me what, can you tell me why two attorneys have told you that it is appropriate for him to ask the question now, but for some reason you feel that you are right? So what makes you right?
Because you, the council adopted Robert's Rules of Order as the way to proceed through meetings. And the way you proceed through meetings is you follow with the agenda. And the agenda item says the treasurer's report, which has been sent to you. The questions are about that report. That's what, what you're doing. And we can ask, you can ask those questions, but it's not the place on the agenda. It's that simple. My job is to continue in an orderly fashion, this meeting. If, if you want to just turn every meeting into a fight between the city council and the mayor, that is your prerogative. But it is my job to try and keep this meeting.
But you're the one who's turning it into a fight, because all you got to do is let him ask this question. They told you that it's all right. So why do you, you are the one who's disagreeing with the, the, uh, the law?
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm disagreeing with you, but not the law. The Rules of Order that you adopted said that we have to follow the agenda. That's what we're trying to do. That's all. Now, are there any other questions about the treasurer's report?
The treasurer's report that is before the council, the year-end treasurer's report, but encompasses all of the final numbers for the, for the year. I think anything that, that's relating to those numbers is related to the treasurer's report. I mean, is, is that something that we can do? You can do it now, you can do it later, but, but.
Okay, let's do that. Mr. Valid, that's your advice. I'm going to turn it over to you to run the meeting, let Mr. Franklin ask all the questions he wants.
I'm not trying to run the meeting. I'm not trying to run the meeting.
It sounds to me, it sounds to me like you don't want, nobody wants the mayor to run the meeting, so somebody else should run the meeting, let you ask all the questions you want. Get off the agenda, but the job of city government is to conduct business. So you have to have an orderly meeting and you have to stay on the agenda and the topic as best best as you can. That's all I'm trying, that's all.
Mayor.
So if we want to talk about, we have places to do that, that's fine. There's nothing wrong with that. But we have to proceed in some kind of, along the agenda which was sent out already. That's all. It's that simple. Yes, ma'am.
But Mayor, it, it, it's, I don't feel like it's anything to be upset about. I mean, it's the treasurer's report. The treasurer asked, did anyone have any questions? This is about 2020, and he's asking questions about 2020. That's in this report. So maybe he's just getting clarity about what's in the report. The treasurer did say, he didn't have any comments, but if we had questions, we could ask.
And he did. He asked a lot of questions.
He did, but, but he's not, he wasn't done, Mayor.
Okay, so it seems like it's the council's will to let Mr. Franklin continue. So, Mr. Franklin, you're recognized, asked all the questions you want. My apologies.
Um, Mr. Mr. Turner, I just, oh, I'm, I'm, I, I didn't try to, my thing is, Mr. Turner, I was trying to figure out this. You said admin is 1.3 million dollars, right?
Oh, I'm sorry, I was muted. I don't have, Mr. Frank, there's no, I don't have a problem answering any of your questions, so please continue.
Because thi- this, this is my, you know, this is a, this is a treasurer's report. These are last year's numbers. Now, I know we'll get to the budget. I am, I have questions for, for that, but this is the treasurer's report. My thing is, I know, I, I know what, I know, I know what I'm trying to do. I'm trying to, you know, when we talked about all these other issues, but my issue right here is to make sure, sure that people understand the budget and what's in the treasurer's report. We get a monthly report from you and they don't, they can see it if they request it. But they need to know the numbers, like with, with the police department, you know, we, we, we gave, you said, we gave a hundred, we put a hundred thousand dollars in overtime, right? Then you said it was, we got the money we got. Sir?
Yeah, I said initially it was a hundred thousand, yeah. And you guys made, you made, uh, you increased the appropriations to a hundred and seventy-four thousand.
Okay, so, okay, so it was a hundred and seventy-four over, right?
Yeah, yeah, you, yeah, you added in addition, $4,000 to the police overtime budget.
Right, so, and, and, and that's what I was getting with. So we had, so trying to make sure the numbers are right. So what, what do we have for, what's the fire department's total budget for last year?
Total?
Yes.
Total, total budget?
Yes, sir, for, uh, last year.
Uh, 1.9, uh, 1,970,000 dollars.
Million, okay. What was overtime for fire?
Initially, or what we ended up with?
What we ended up with.
Yeah, nothing do.
A hundred and eighty-three thousand.
One eighty-three.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, when, when, okay, so what's, what about with the landfill?
Overtime, I mean, total, total budget?
Yeah, total budget.
One, uh, 1,164,000.
What about street sanitation? We used to a hundred and what thousand?
1,164,000.
What do we have? Do they have an overtime?
Well, that was landfill. Now, did you, yeah, uh, land. Well, that was landfill now. Did you, yeah, uh, landfill.
They have any overtime?
Yeah. Uh, their overtime was. What was budgeted or what they had?
Okay, what, what, so what, what did they have?
Forty-eight thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars.
Okay, okay. So what, what, street sanitation?
Well, street was, sanitation's overtime was. Thirty-six thousand. A little over thirty-six, it was thirty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-six dollars and street. Was. Street was twenty-eight thousand.
Okay, twenty-eight. That's what, they, they came under budget, right?
Both of those were over budget. They, you know, we had that storm, that storm.
Right.
They got a lot of overtime.
Yeah.
During those two storms.
So. What I was, what I was doing, well, well, counsel, what I was doing is asking Mr. Turner these questions because. Uh, when people heard about finance, you know, they don't, the public doesn't get a financial statement as we get. Uh, they can request for, for, uh, freedom of information. But when people start saying that, you, you know, look at the numbers and the numbers don't lie. This body has support, supported everything that we were supposed to support. And we go over and beyond and, uh, for the police department, fire department, all our departments. Uh, it's cause see, I don't, we don't, Mr. Turner and Craigman from Rome, we don't mess with the, the wa, we don't mess with the water salaries and stuff like that. They, they're separate from us, but it's, it's all, it's all the same money, but we just don't, they do their own reporting right away.
Yeah, I mean, you control, I mean, you, you have, you control the finances for every department in the city, whether it's water or any other department.
So, so do you have, oh, you have, well, would you have those numbers for the water department overtime as well?
I don't, I don't have them on, and I don't have with me right now. You know, that, that's a different, that's a separate accounting system and I haven't pulled that report yet.
Okay, and, and the Latin, Latin. With, with, with the minute, with the administration, uh, salaries and stuff. We, we pay like contractors and everything out of, out of that one point three million dollars. Like if we, if we entered into a, a contract with somebody like, um, the human resource contract that, that the mayor was trying to enter into. That money comes out of this one point three million dollars as well, right? Anything, anything that the mayor, that, that happens in, with admin comes out of this money right here, right? Wherever you decide to hire somebody to cut some grass or to do something like this, this is not all, uh, just, just salaries. This comes, this is a paper, all, all supplies and stuff like that comes out of this one point three million dollars, right?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, that's just, you know, I, I want to get some clarity for some people. And, uh, that, that's how, and I thank you for, uh, answering those questions and, uh, I, I, I just, I thank you for that. Because people need to, every, yes, sir, cause people need to know these numbers. Uh, when, you know, you, you, when you, I can, I under, I understand now as a citizen, I didn't understand when I would see. Said people spending money. Now I see, and I'm trying to get everybody to grasp what, what we do here. And, uh, that's all I have and I thank you for answering my questions.
No problem. Let us see, Mr. Franklin, no problem. That's what I'm here for. So anytime. Any other questions?
Okay, no other questions from the treasurer's report. We're gonna move on. Uh, this is the point and I don't know. If Mr. Collier is on board yet. But the, uh. I want to give you an update on the water issue which developed. There he is, Mr. Collier, if you would, uh, join me on this discussion for questions particularly. So I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna update you on it and then we can continue on however you want to proceed.
Water, if you want to listen.
The, um. For those who are listening, there are two plants. There's the old, what was the City of Helena Water Plant. Uh, on Columbia. And then there's the West Helena, what was the City of West Helena Water Plant, which is on Plaza. You have, uh, two main water tanks. Uh, that, that fill West, the West Helena Water System. Uh, they're very divided. Uh, in terms of there's no, there's no integration between the Helena Water Plant and the West Helena Water Plant. Uh, even though the city has merged and now there is one water department, there's still a west plant and an east plant. Um, the citizens in Helena, what was Helena, the old Helena Water System, the old Helena Water Company. East plant are unaffected by what I'm about to say. Completely unaffected. On the West Helena side, uh, as you know about. Uh, within the last month, the city council approved an emergency and waived bidding on an emergency request. Mr. Collier to pay for, um, the, uh, repair. Of an aerator, which is the big silver box that's over on our west plant over by the, the, uh. Over by the, uh, police department on Plaza. That device, uh, the, the parts were received. The device had not been repaired in time. The emergency we were worried about, um, occurred and it malfunctioned. And Mr. Collier, I'm gonna ask you to correct anything I say wrong or improve on it, but essentially, uh. Sunday night, Monday morning, overnight, it malfunctioned, which caused the west plant to have problems. That has led to, uh, uh, an unusual amount of iron and sediment. In the West Helena water supply. Uh, that issue began to be dealt with Monday. Today, early this morning, the water supply in our tanks in West Helena, uh, got, got to a critical level. Uh, as there was, uh, there were attempts to add more water to the tank so that. They could repair the aerator. I'm trying to put this as simply as I can. And those attempts weren't successful. So we were not un, we were unable to get enough water back in the tank. Uh, compared to how much usage there was going on at the same time. Uh, lots of meth, everybody was brought in to the scene this morning, uh. Arso Real Water Association, Ken Walland, uh, Mike Alexander. Lucky, Steve Luckett from Mississippi. He's one of our vendors who, who works a lot on our system. Uh, of course, all of our water plant, uh, employees and Mr. Collier and I. To try and come up with a, a fix before there might be a critical shortage in that water tank. There were several strategies. Those strategies failed throughout the day. And it got to a point where, uh, and we were in contact, have been since Monday with Arso Health Department. Uh, as well as Arso Real Water, who have come down here and been on the scene, I might add. Uh, about the health and safety, cause that's the number one concern about our water supplies, the safety of it. And we're reassured that even though it's, um, discolored. Uh, water pressure was somewhat affected in the beginning and very much affected now. Uh, that it was not unsafe. And, uh, but it's, at one point today, our water pressure and our water supply got so low that the health department. Said that we have no proof of any contamination. Uh, but it, because of the loss of water pressure and the potential for that, we needed to issue a bull order. So we issued a bull order. On top of that, uh, we ran out of water in, in several homes and several businesses and schools. Uh, just flat ran out of water. And, um. The plan, and this is, uh, I want Mr. Collier to focus on, but the, the plan now. Is that while you, water usage declines overnight. Uh, to build that water supply back up, back up into the tanks. So that we can flush out those filters that caused the problem. And the filters were plugged up because of the aerator issue. And that, that we're, we're hoping that that will resolve the problem. Uh, our crews have been out there all night long, twenty-four, seven, I mean, forty-eight hours, twenty-four hours, uh, all night. Uh, since Sunday really, and continued toward harder tonight. That's the status. Mr. Collier, do you want to add anything to, or change anything I said?
Well, everything's pretty well explained what you said. The problem is, is we're dealing with an old system that's been built, was built in nineteen sixty-four. And, uh, the, there hasn't been any, very few changes has been done. Uh, it, it, uh, it, the equipment is seen to be, you know, falling apart. Uh, so what happened is that a couple of months or so, probably about three months ago, uh, we had a problem with the aerator. It took me at least two weeks to figure out where the, uh, uh, aerator came from. Uh, you know, and, uh, to get in contact with anybody with it, you know, that, that had anything to do with it. Uh, so after I got in touch with them. Uh, it finally, we finally got some parts ordered, got the part ordered and everything. They came in last week, probably Thursday. Uh, and, but during that time. Uh, the aerator is, is used to take out the impurities in the water, the, 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 uh. Which is iron, uh, and whatever else other impurities is going on. Uh, and, and we had to realize that, and, and, and I just realized is that Helena has less iron. In, 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 in its water than West Helena. So, uh, that's the reason why we have an aerator over in, uh, West Helena. Uh, but the west, but air, red, the, the aerator went out. Uh, and, and, uh, we, we had started accumulating a lot of, uh, iron i- in this, in the system. Uh, I got in touch with the health department, asked them, uh, you know, what did they think about the iron and. Uh, you know, what do we need to do? And, uh, that's what they, that's when they told, told me that we need to, uh, increase the chlorine. The chlorine ha- helped reduce the iron some, uh, i- in your water and it, and it makes it even safe. So that's why a lot of people would probably have a problem complaining about a lot of chlorine in the water. But the water, and, and chlorine, a lot of time chlorine in the water, uh, excess chlorine in the water. Higher iron can cause, uh, discoloration on your clothes or whatever. So people, uh, may have complained about that. Uh, but the main thing was is, uh, it, while, while we were waiting for the, uh, parts for the aerators coming in. Uh, the filters itself became clogged up. Uh, we, we, uh, didn't realize that we wasn't getting the, the quality, the quality of water that we needed. Until in the last week or so, we tend to have. Lots of lines that, that, that need to be repaired. And these lines was, was, was large lines, which are eight inch mains and ten inch mains. And, and twelve inch mains all within a week's time. And this is what took away from your volume in your tank and when your, 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 your filters couldn't keep up with it. Uh, and that's what ha- actually have, has, has happened in the last, uh, couple of days. Is that we got to a point where the filters was not able to keep up. Uh, so we did everything in the last couple of days. That, uh, my, my operator, uh, crew over there in the west area. Uh, did the best that they could do with what they had. Uh, so we, we, uh, we, we, uh, uh. Knew that the tank was getting low and we did all that we could to try to maintain it in order we knew to do it, to fix it. Uh, but i- i- it, all else failed. We tried everything that we, 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 we could troubleshoot to do. Uh, so then, uh. It so happened, uh, yesterday, uh, we, we had, uh. Uh, Arkansas Real Water came in, uh, and, and, uh, they made some suggestions. A guy by the name of Terry Futterberry, he's very good with the water. He made some suggestion. They didn't work. It didn't work. So then today they sent in a couple of guys, more guys came in. These two guys that came in today with Arkansas Real Water, they're doing an exceptional job. They, they had, their ideas tend to work. So at this point, the crew is over there now with my crew, uh, over there. And they're gonna try to get, which, uh, we are, we are making some lead weight. Uh, the fields are, are now filtering where at first there was not. Uh, but they hadn't been washed as much as they need to be because we don't have enough water. But as soon as we can get enough water in the system, hopefully tonight, when people get ready to go to bed or something and they don't use near as much water. Uh, our water level will increase even more. So to make a long story short is that, uh, by, with the help of, uh, Arkansas Real Water. Uh, Ken Wiley and Mike, uh, uh, young man named Steve, uh, uh, Luckett from, uh. Uh, Miss, Mississippi, all pitched in and tried to do all that we could and everything that we thought to do to get it fixed. And, uh, we, we, we have been working, uh, uh, you know, uh. I, 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 I say my crew, for instance, we worked from twelve o'clock last night till, till tonight, uh, today. And, and, and previously the night before, we did the same thing, trying to maintain the tank itself. So, uh, the thing is, is we're trying to be able to, we're trying to manage with old equipment. And, uh, in, in the same time, we had to say these, these lines broke. Uh, we had the wells, if, if you recall, uh, I think you all approved of a well back about two weeks ago. Uh, well, number ten, well, number nine went out along with this, just, just the last couple of days. So, so you, we, we are, like I said, we're dealing with a lot of old equipment. And, uh, I, I, you know, nobody want to spend money, but if it takes it to, to keep the system going, this is what we're gonna have to do. So, um. All I'm saying is to ask the public to bear with us. Uh, we, we're doing the best we can with what we got. And that i- i- is, is our goal is try to, try to conserve the customers. Uh, 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 the best that we can do and, and give them our, our best. That's, that's, that's our, that's, that's, that's our goal.
Mr. Collier, Joe St. Columbia?
Yes, sir.
Uh, you, you think you'll have that situation resolved by morning?
Uh, it seemed like that we are gonna be, uh. I'd say at least eighty percent, uh, back and forth.
Pressure back up?
Yes, sir. I've, I've had some customers that called and said that their pressure is back up now. So it, it, it is coming up. And my crew is gonna be out there at the twelfth and, and, and probably even longer, whatever it takes to try to keep the system going. That's, that's, that's our goal. We, we, our goal, and the reason why, uh, uh, boil oil was done. Was because we did still hit water in the tank. But it, I, I, I didn't want to take a chance in, 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 while we were working on this system. Uh, that someone would get sick or something because of. Our lack of informing them. And that's why we, uh, uh, call, I called the, uh, health department. And, 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 and asked them and that, that we, and told them that we were gonna go ahead on and do a boil oil.
Can you give us a, uh, uh, res- a report as to what you feel necessary to. In the future to solve this problem, where we won't have it again, what we need to do out there in West Helena? Cause the Helena system is completely separate. I understand that. Uh, but the West Helena needs some attention and needs some money spent into it. Would you give us a report as to what you feel is necessary to correct this so it won't happen in the future?
Uh, yes, and, uh, I, I do my best to, uh, report, you know, what I, what I think is best for it.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, now I found out and it is something all new to me i- is that, um. I- is that, um, at one time, the seat of Helena and West Helena had hooked up a line. That if something would go bad, they could switch over that line and, and, and could use, uh, Helena water to fill up the West Helena water.
Right.
I, I don't know what happened. They said it's been over thirty years ago. We found the line, opened it, opened it up and evidently somebody had disconnected the line because the line went into the ditch. And so, uh, somewhere, so they discontinued the line. But that's something that, uh, the guy from Arkansas Real Water and I talked about. We need a way that, for instance, if the city, uh, water is low in one, i- i- in one city, we should be able to. Uh, uh, hook up to our, to the other city and run along with the, you know, to help the city out.
Sure. Yeah.
And that's one goal, uh, uh, I'm, I'm gonna, I want to talk to the mayor about maybe trying to get that line hooked back up.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your hard work, Mr. Carter. This is Chris Franklin, you and your guys. Uh, when, uh. When, uh, when the camp for teasers over the west side of the water, he was trying to, um, get all those things fixed. Uh, then suddenly King got, he retired, but a lot of those issues that you were talking about on the west side of the side. Mr. Partizzi was, uh, that's, we had two water managers, Helena had its water manager, West Helena had, and so. But Mr. Partizzi was, uh, was in. In route of getting all that stuff done to the water. He had told us about a couple of prizes that this probably would happen. Uh, with, 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 with that before he passed, or even before he retired. So then we got a new water manager who wasn't familiar, who was Kevin McCormick, who went familiar with the city. Uh, of West Helena, uh, water. So when we, he left, then Mr. Ross came. Then all of what Mr. Partizzi was trying to do out of West Helena failed. Because, you know, then you came on and then yeah, well, we merged over. Helena and West Helena. So it's things that you know about Helena that, that, you know, still learn about West Helena. When we had a water manager on Helena side and the West Helena side. So what I'm saying is, Mr., uh, if the council remember, Mr., um. Partizzi came before us a couple of times, uh, and he had a lot of stuff in the works to get done, but he retired. So I just wanted to tell you that, uh, some of the issues that, and then going on the west side, Mr. Partizzi was trying to. Work with, with Mike Alexander was in Helena, so he was going out to West, also trying to figure out some of the issues that West Helena was having, but. Some of the issues that I knew since I've been on the city council, uh, some of those issues, but I want to tell you, I appreciate you and your guys who tried to get, uh. Water to our citizens.
Thank you. Uh, now, uh, one more thing I kind of wanted to bring out was, is, is that, uh. Helena has a better plan than West Helena. As far as their structures, uh, uh, plan, the design plans. I can't find, I've, we, I've found over two hundred maps over there. And I don't have half of, I don't even have the design plan of the tanks, which Helena had designed plan of the tanks. Where the tank go, what line goes into the tank, stuff like that. I don't have that of West Helena. I don't have it, but what I didn't have, like I said, I said, I looked for this information for my aerator. I never saw one design picture of an aer- aerator. I- i- in, in the files, nowhere. So it, what it seemed like to me was, in, 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 and, I mean, it's nobody's fault, I guess, but. It seemed like to me that, and I told the mayor, just it seemed like to me. Uh, that when they designed, when, when they was running this plant. It was like. You're gonna run it forever. See, and that's not the way a plant's supposed to run. You should be able to run a plant where when I leave here, somebody has to be step right in my shoes. And be able to run it, you know, the plant too, because they would, I would have they, the designs there for them to do. And, 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 and that's what, where the plant should have been, but right now we don't have any plans of nothing over there in West Helena. And, and we just going with, you know, uh, I guess we just guessing is what we're doing. And that's, 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 that's one of our problems. But I think, I think now guys like Willis E, he's been there for a long time. He's a big here, big asset, you know, but when Willis E go. Then a lot of his knowledge, you know, is gone if the, if, uh, we don't get the young peoples involved in it. And that's, that's my goal now is to make sure that, to, 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 that the, yeah, the, the young workers that working with him. Uh, try to get some of the knowledge that he have because, you know, when, when he's gone, he's gone, you know? And I appreciate the council working with me.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Carter? Any other questions about the, the issues today? Well, I, I don't know if we'll get that far, but, uh, actually, you know, um. And I. Want to make sure, if, if you don't object, since Mr. Carter is already kind of on. The, the hot seat, I guess. There are two issues on the agenda if you don't object to, to moving them up. That deal with some of the things that he's talking about, the water sear, stainless steel. Parts and. Then there's another one, uh, for a pump motor on number ten that he was talking about earlier. For eleven thousand three forty-nine forty-six, that would have to be approved by the council. Well, we just asked, is there any objection to, to discuss in that now? Okay, there's no objection. Mr. Carter, would, would you want to go ahead and talk about the, the first item was the stainless steel parts? And I think that's a twelve thousand dollar price tag approximately. And, um.
Uh, yes. I don't have that before me. Uh, but that is concerning, uh, lift station nine. Uh, we have had, this, the pump that we put in, in there over, with two years ago with Jack was here. Uh, they pulled a sample on the material down, and that, the material. Uh, at lift station nine is coming from one of those industries that in that area. And nobody claims to, uh, to, to own the ownership of it. Uh, but the, the material is, is just actually eating those pumps up. Uh, we, y- y- you, so, uh, this, uh, uh. One of the engineers said that the stainless steel would probably la- last longer, it'd be a little more expensive. Uh, and, uh, so I'm just saying that where we need to try, uh. The stainless steel because in two years' time, you, you know, I mean, that's, that's no time for a pump, you know? So.
What you're asking me on is to, if they would approve twelve thousand dollars is what, what it is. To purchase stainless steel parts. Is what you're, what you're asking, right?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Mayor, is this the invoice we received, uh, uh, invoice, uh, one forty-six?
Uh, to be honest, I'm not looking at it either way, so I'm not sure.
I have an invoice in my.
It should be, it should show twelve thousand, I think it's twelve thousand even.
Eleven thousand three hundred and forty-nine forty-six, what I have.
No, so that, that's, that's the next issue we're about to talk about.
Okay. I don't have that other.
Mr. Mr. Joe, yours is from Ten Carver. The company name is Ten Carver, T E N C A R V A.
Says Luckett as the top.
Okay, you got one there for Ten Carver also.
I do.
I hope.
Well, it's.
Yes, yes, I see it. Yeah, yeah. Twenty-three thousand four hundred and two dollars.
That would be if, uh, that, if I'm right, that would be if we put, if we would do both pumps. Now, I, I, here's my suggestion, is just to do one pump and see how that one pump lasts.
Okay, that's the invoice for seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighty-three, eighty-two dollars. That's what I'm looking at.
Yes.
Okay, okay. And if we, if we would do that and it don't last no longer than two ye- years, then we may, we may as well go back to what we got. Which would be cheaper.
So you want us to improve, uh, to approve the, uh, invoice from Ten Carver, is that right?
Yes.
I saw a move, Mr. Mayor.
So, uh, Mr. St. Columbia makes a motion that we approve. You want to give that amount in the, the items on the invoice, the council officer clear?
What I have on mine showing seventeen thousand eight hundred and eighty-two dollars, is that right, uh, Mr. Carter?
Uh, I'm not quite sure. Uh, and I apologize, because like I said, I didn't have it before me. And it has been some time since I.
Sandy, is that the one?
Yes, sir, that's the one.
Is that the one I have circled? I thought I had it circled. Okay.
Okay, that's my motion to approve that pump. That's a stainless steel pump, I noticed.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, I want to be clear on this. The, that's, is that the, uh, we're talking about stainless steel parts? Mr. Carter?
It should be the pump and part, it should be everything.
Yeah, labor, everything should be.
But not just pump ten, we're talking about.
That's, uh, that would be fifth station nine pump, we're talking about now.
That's the invoice I've got here for Ten Carver.
Okay, I just want to make sure the motion is clear, so.
Yes, sir, that's for lift station nine sewer station.
Lift station nine, sewer station, stainless steel parts and motor. Uh, as invoiced per Mr. St. Columbia's motion.
Well, it's got twenty-three thousand dollars, twenty-three thousand four hundred and two dollars circled here. Is that the amount you want approved? It says. I'm a little confused here. We have two numbers. Uh, it says option same as above, but pumps will stainless steel wet end pump parts. Which I don't understand the terminology.
I'm afraid you have me at the disadvantage. I don't have that in front of me.
This Davis.
One thousand three hundred and eighty-four dollars, is that it, Mr. Ramsey?
Yes, ma'am. Twelve thousand three eighty-four, and then the city attorney will do a bid waving ordinance for Tuesday night, next Tuesday night, but we can go ahead and do it tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so. Soundtrack. I guess the motion would be to approve. The invoice for twelve thousand three eighty.
Four.
Four?
Yes.
For the stainless steel, uh, lift station at number nine. Did I say that correctly? I just want to make sure we're clear what we're doing.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Any, anybody want to add or detract from that? Okay, so motion has been made. Is, is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis seconds the motion. Are there any questions, uh, about the motion? Okay, Ms. Ramsey called her on.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia?
Yes.
Ms. Crockett?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Six, yes?
Motion passes. Mr. Carter, would you, thank you, would you want to talk about the pump motor on number ten?
Okay, uh, now that was the one, uh, Meredith, then, uh, that week I was out. Uh, in, in, doing some. Uh, when I was out with, uh, owner, on leave. And, uh, you, you had approved it through, I think it was emergency thing that came up at that time, Jeff was there. And, uh, it is a whale. That's what it is. Now that whale has been put back in place. It's already done. So, you know, uh.
So we've already spent that money?
It's already done. So my, what I'm saying is I don't know if it, 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 it hasn't been paid or anything. It wasn't paid because that was, that's why I brought it back to you is that, is to make sure that you had approved it. That was the one that you and Jeff, uh, Jeff told you that he need to have that, that, uh, whale number ten fixed. You remember, uh, I was way and, and I guess he called you because he had problem with the, with the whale?
That's invoice number one forty-six, uh, Mr. Carter, is that right?
Right.
Eleven thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars.
I'm not disagreeing.
Yeah.
I'm not disagreeing with you, but I don't, I don't really, and I, I could be wrong, so. But I specifically remember that.
And.
But that doesn't mean it didn't happen. We do, we do an awful lot, so.
It's, it's just show on there that, that is, uh, uh, lift station nine, lift station ten, it should say pump ten on it. Somewhere on, in that paper.
I don't see it.
It's, at the top, it says ship to Helena, West Helena Water Whale Ten.
Whale Ten, that's it.
So pump motor number ten, eleven thousand three forty-nine forty-six, but you're saying it's already been done?
Yes, it's already been done.
So is this something we've already approved? Is, is that what he's saying?
It already been done.
He said, he said that, this must have been, was this a long time ago?
No, this here had just been installed. And, uh, that was the reason why I brought you the bill is because, uh, you know, I didn't. I actually didn't know anything about it until, uh, uh. It, it was already done, so, but it, it's something that, uh, uh, city council, uh, uh, personnel. It, I, I, I don't know who approved it or how it was done, but it was something that needed to be done because right now, if it had not been done. We would have been in trouble. Lift, uh, your whale number nine went out. And, and, uh, whale number ten i- i- is, 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 is actually what we needed. So it, it's actually, uh, you know, it, it may not have been done the right way or whatever, but, uh, it was needed. And so, you know, I mean, that's all I can say.
I, I don't honestly remember, but that doesn't mean it didn't happen, so. Uh, I don't, now we did declare, I did declare an emergency today and they are repairing, uh, pump eight, is that right? Next to the concrete on Plaza.
Yes, pump eight is being repaired today.
By Mr. Luckett?
Whale eight, excuse me. It's a whale.
And, and. Essentially, that's a contributing factor in the problem that we're having because if it had been. Repaired, they, it could quickly replenish our. Our, uh, the way it was explained to me, it could completely, it could quickly replenish our water tank. But it wasn't, so, um, that's part of the work that's been done today. So we'll probably have some invoices. A lot of, we will probably, we will have some invoices from today. Um, I don't know what, what all they are. I don't specifically remember pump ten, but that doesn't mean it didn't happen, necessarily. Disagreeing with you, um, or anything. But anyway, that's, so that's the report. And what does the council want to do on it?
Is this the invoice I'm looking at here, invoice number one forty-six? Is that the one we're discussing?
Yes.
Okay. I move we approve this, uh, eleven thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars forty-six cents for invoice number one forty-six. Put it on the last file reading.
Mr. St. Columbia made the adoption of, or approval of the part, of the purchase. For the invoice regarding pump motor number ten for eleven thousand three hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. Is there a second? Anyone want to second that? Going once, going twice. Okay, my session fails for a second. Um, so we'll try to get more information on that anyway. Uh, anyway, that, anything else you want to bring up, Mr. Carter?
Very soon we'll have something on whale number nine. Doing it same, just in the last couple of days, whale number nine went down. Uh, I, we have, uh, a guy that's coming down, it, it came down. Uh, I, we have, uh, a guy that's coming down, that came down, uh, and he's evaluating what the problem is and everything, and, uh, I would be able to come before, uh, the council and you, uh, with a price that it's going to take. Uh, if we can, you know, if we can be repaired, because there's some more issue, other issue that's coming up, that, uh, we gonna have to, he gonna have to be to tell me whether we're gonna have, hopefully, we don't have to abandon that whale, but it's possible, we may have to abandon that whale. Hopefully, we don't.
Wha- what would that mean if we did abandon it?
That'd mean that you, you, you can't use it anymore.
Well, I know, but what does that mean for the system?
Well, that mean that you either have to try to maybe figure out where you can put another whale in, or that, from what I heard, that whale is not as deep as the whale, other whales that we have. It's possible that we can, uh, have them to add on to that, the, the whale, and, and, uh, which I don't know how, how expensive that can be, and to, and to go even deeper. You know, because from what he, he's thinking is that it's possible that we, we don't have, we, we, we can't test the water level with, with the whale we have. So, but, but now I've got to get back with him tomorrow and see what, what was his conclusion coming, can't, you know, come to, because the fact is that, uh, two years ago, he came and did, you know, all kind of tests on that whale. So he gonna do his comparison with the test on the whale two years ago, to what the whale is doing now, and he probably pretty well tell me what's going on.
Okay.
And then I can come before you and the, the council and tell you, uh, you know, what, what, what it's going to take, uh, maybe to get to, to, to this whale online, or whatever other, uh, alternative we gonna have to do.
How are we doing on five and six stations?
Uh, lift station five, both pumps are down again, I'm kind of, uh, dissatisfied with, uh, uh, Tim, Tim Carver, because, uh, it seemed to me that we having the same problem over and over again with those pumps. And, uh, again, I'm, I'm, I'm having to call him, and hopefully he can come in tomorrow, and I'm, I want to have a talk with him, because like it seemed like to me that, uh, with these pumps being tearing up so often, uh, it should be a guarantee on these pumps. And we should have to be paying, you know, uh, full price on, on, on getting a pump repair, if, if it's not living up, you know, to the, to the, the warranty of it or whatever, uh, but, uh, we're not getting the service out that we should. So that's something I, I've got to address. On lift station five, uh, lift station six, uh, the. The motor itself, uh, went out. Uh, we have, uh, Garrison and company, and a couple of my crew guys pull the pump today, and they carried it to the electric shop to be able to rebuild. Uh, I've got to again check with them tomorrow and see, uh, if, uh, if we can get online in the next day or so, if not, then I'm gonna have to put in another bypass on until I get. Uh, that, that lift station six back online, uh, lift station six is, is very important, that the fact is, that's our final, uh, uh, waste, waste, it goes, leaves there and goes to the river. And, and, and it's very important that we keep that, that station up. Uh, that's another goal I have, and again, I, I guess it's talking about me, my goal is to, uh, refab that, that station where, uh, all the, the pumps are above, not down in the pit, so. But that's another issue I'm, I'm, I'm gonna have to address this, the council with soon, because we have stations that, guys, that is under, underground, and very unsafe for guys to go down and work on, or if quick or something come up, they're down there caught. And, and it's just unsafe, so those are some issues that's gonna, that I have planned to address the council with later on, and, uh, you know, I don't, I don't want to take all your time up on stuff like that, but, uh, it's coming, that's all I wanted to say.
Uh, questions?
Yes, Ms. Carter, Chris Franklin, I, I was just gonna ask you, uh, you were saying about the plans for West Helena, have you gotten with former, uh, city engineer, uh, Mr. Jim Frazier, to get his input on, uh, you know, you saying about the maps and stuff? Have you reached out with, you know, he would, he was with Klein and Frazier, uh, it's a, they bought Klein Apple, you should be able to get with him, Mr. Jim Frazier should know a little bit, a lot about West Helena, the West Helena side.
Yes, sir.
Have you been in touch with him?
Yes, sir, as a matter of fact, like I say, he was, he worked with us all day today, uh, he had them, uh, drawing, uh, on the, uh, or your aerator. Uh. Uh, you know, on the plan on how, how it was set up, so that's very helpful, uh, to, to us, because I called him, the mayor and I, we called him in and help, where he can come in and help us with, we, I think that we, we need to include a, a bypass on his aerator, so, so if this problem occur again, then it won't be in the downtime. If the downtime is, if, if we have to shut the, uh, if we had to replace the aerator, that mean that we had to shut the plant down, the plant has to, has to, it, 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 it can't stay down no longer than five hours or something like that without, you know, without, uh, running. So, what they did, they did not put a bypass in it, and that's what we were planning on doing, I was putting a bypass in the, in the, uh, uh, aerator, at the aerator itself. So, yeah, he's been very, I, I talked with him, and so, uh, that's who I really deal with when, when I, I'm having to tackle my issues, where's tanks or whatever.
And Mr. Carter, with those pumps, it is a place out in, um, I told you all before, we can get pumps cheaper out of, uh, Stegar, it's a place that we used to get our pumps from, that are way cheaper than what we paying for. I kind of, you know, I, I kind of gave you all a list of the, the, the name of the business out there, that's who we used to get the post from, and they last like seventy, seventeen years, these posts that we started getting, and they're now four hundred dollars for the poster we need.
Where, where, where was that? Do you still have that?
Yeah, well, I, I'll bring it over tomorrow, I, I had given it to you all, because when, when, last time we had a pump to go out, we pay like six or seven thousand dollars, and I, and I called out down the Stegar, because, um, my, 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 my brother's cousin, well, anyway, I know somebody who, who dealt with pumps in Mississippi. He's like, man, we get our post right there in Stegar, it's cheaper, y'all paying all this money, and I, I think I told you all about this, and it saved us a lot of money, and we can go right down there and get the pump and get it put on the same day. I mean, that's who the city used to deal with, that's who West Helena used to be when we.
Uh, you know, because I, I'm about saving money for the company, you know, that's, that's, that's my goal.
I see, but, uh, that's, that's who the city of West Helena used to do business with, and we got the pump the same day, so I mean, you know, so I, I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm, if the laws will, I'll meet you tomorrow to give you all their contact, and they, they. That's who the city used, the city of West Helena used to do, get their pumps from, because, you know, that's what, that's what, that's what that was, but I mean, to me, if that's okay with the mayor.
Of course. Uh, yeah, I think the more estimates, business competition there is, the better, you know, I'm pretty familiar with Stegar, and most of their pumps are designed to pull from, I mean, a hundred, a hundred fifty feet, because the water tables are so low, uh, to irrigate the rice fields, and, um, so they, they definitely do have a lot of, uh, companies, especially for agricultural use, and. Uh, yeah, I think, I think absolutely, we should get estimates from there, no harm done, as long as they're up to spec for municipal water sewer.
Yeah, because that's who, that's who we used, man, that's who we used, they used to get the pumps from on the West Helena side, so, I mean, and that's how I really found out about it, but I think it, it's something good, but, you know, that if we need a pump in a day, in a couple of hours, we can run down there and get it, so, that's just, you know, it, it would help us out, because he's saying he still got pump, I think, what, seven and eight, they need replaced? And I mean, if it's not gonna cost, if it's not gonna cost a lot of money, we should try to get all the pumps fixed, so we wouldn't have to depend on, you got, we just replaced ten, now you have to replace nine, so what about seven, eight? You know, it's what is, if you can find it for a reasonable price, just get them and have them all done, and, and get a city, a report of, we used to get water reports monthly, like we do a treasure report, and, you know, we knew what was going on, now we're not getting reports to know what's going on, so we can, so when these issues occur, we can better handle them, because we don't get reports.
Okay, well, that's fine, you know, uh, if the council, council, uh, need a report, that's fine.
And, and, and Mr. Carter, it, it's just like when you have issues, that we, we, we'll know, it's not saying just give us a report, because we, we, we need to know that when you could, like, you have an issue, we can, like, when you were out, and you were saying, hey, you know, you were out on leave, we, the mayor can't remember, and the city council don't really know, with, with, just like Mr. St. Columbia's motion, what, we don't really know, because you were out, and the mayor don't know, but if we had some form of, some report, we want, we want to have your back and Mr. Uh, Patterson's back, when it comes to, you know, and the mayor, when it comes to spending money, because nobody knows, the mayor said he don't remember, and you were out, so, you know, you, you see what I'm saying? It, it's not only, like, I, I got you, I'm just trying to say what, that's the reason why I didn't second it, because I don't know what, what, what's going on, don't, you were out, so nobody really know.
Well, yeah, I, I, I see what you're saying, uh, uh. But, you know, and, and then, I, I mean, I don't know, I, I know that things sometime are done, uh, maybe done wrong, seem to be done wrong or whatever, but then, you know, uh. That person that installed that pump, we played, repaired it, must get paid. I mean, we, we, we get that, we got the service there, so that's what I, I, I can understand you may be upset at a point, but that person has to get paid, he can't do work for nothing. So I, in other words, I've got this, we, we, we are using this pump now, if we would not have got that pump ten. We would have been even, in even, uh, 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 worse shape than we are now, because this pump ten pumped a thousand gallons a minute, the only other pump that pumped a thousand gallons a minute is pumping nine. It's down. So then we, we, we went down to from, pump from a thousand gallons a minute, to one pump was only pump four gallons, a hundred gallons a minute, to another pump that only pumped two hundred gallons.
Is that the pump I made the motion on, Mr. Collier?
Sir, yes, sir. Uh, the, the pump that, that, uh, for some reason, we got some disagreement on when, uh, when it occurred or whatever, uh, it had, it, it occurred in the last, uh, two weeks or so. You know, but.
Mr. Carter, we're not, we're not saying we're not gonna pay anybody, you know, don't nobody seem to know what's going on, don't I, you seem to have an accurate price, though, I mean, we don't, we don't know anything.
That is an accurate price on, on, excuse me, uh, council, uh, that is an accurate price on, on, on pump ten, that is accurate.
Okay, but, but, but you, you, you're saying you were out, uh, we, don't nobody, no, you said, what, what pump you said is?
Uh, that's well ten.
Well ten, so, we don't, we don't, we don't, we, okay, we, I, I don't know anything about it.
Yes, sir.
So that's just my thing, uh, this is my first time hearing about a whale being, you know, so, I, we don't, I don't know, so, I mean, it's safe, but I understand, people have to get paid, don't nobody do work for free, but, you know, if it, if this was an emergency, right?
Yes, sir.
So if it was an emergency, uh, excuse me, if this is an emergency, this, we, 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 the city council meets for everything, if this was a, a dire emergency, we should have met and had this done the same day it happened, so we don't know.
Yes, sir.
That, that, that's, Mr. Carter, it's nothing against, the, the, the mayor will be paid, but we don't know, if this was an emergency, just like you were out, the, the mayor could say, hey, sit down and text, hey, we need to have this meeting to approve this, because this well is, this well is down, we don't know, and I, and I'm sorry, I don't know.
I, I.
Ms. Carter, I do have a question for you, I'm trying to jog my own memory, you're not talking about the, the issue at Helena Crossing a couple of weeks ago, are you?
No, sir.
Are you?
No, sir.
No, is, you're not, because you were here for that, so you, you're not talking about, you're saying that this was, this was an emergency in the last couple of weeks?
Yes, sir, I want to say it was. What's the date on it, what's, what's the date on that, uh, uh, repair? What's the date on, on, on that, uh, pump, on the whale itself?
They invoice is one eleven.
One eleven, so, so it had been approximately.
Date, wait, shipping, huh? Oh, oh.
Well, I'm more concerned with the date that it was done, really. Than the invoice date. Anyway, I don't want to take up the council's time, I, I don't call it, but again, that doesn't mean it didn't happen, usually, if there's an, if there was an emergency. Um, then, then I, then there was, and I'll stand corrected, uh, but I can't, I just can't recall it right now, and, and it's not the Helena Crossing, that's the only thing I can think of, but I could be wrong, we have a lot of issues with the water department, so I certainly want to say that I could be mistaken, but we'll look into it. I just don't, right now, I just don't recall it, but it's been a long day, I could be mistaken, so, we'll look into that, try to get some answers one way or another. I do want to point out, though, that, um, want to clarify one thing, we don't pump any sewage into the Mississippi River, we pump it into the treatment plant, and it gets treated, and we, we. We, we, it's treated to the point to where it's essentially, uh, harmless water, and can be used, uh. In any way that doesn't, that doesn't, uh, have any pathogens or anything dangerous to human people or human beings, excuse me, with environment, and y'all were, uh, here when Mayor Hallwell. Uh, started work on those sewage treatment plants south of town, and, uh, one of the, we haven't really discussed, but the, the authority was able to resume that project after I was able to get the hold on federal grants lifted by Department of Justice. And we were able to complete those sewage treatment plants, so that the treatment is, uh, compliant with. The IDQ, the Health Department, and E, um, the federal government and all the rest, so I didn't want to leave the impression that we pump sewage into the Mississippi River. Uh, also, the question regarding Mr. Frazier, Mr. Frazier sold his firm, um, and I think the answer was Mr. Wallen hadn't been there with us all day, uh, he's who bought Mr. Frazier's firm and inherited all of those maps and things, so it was a little confusing there, I just want to set that straight.
I have.
Yes.
I have a question for Mr. Collier, where is well number ten located? What's the location?
It's at the, it's at, at the, uh, uh, West Helena, uh, shop area, right there next to the shop.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Uh-huh, and I want to clarify, I'd like to clarify, uh, I don't know where it has come about pumping certain sewer over to, to the river, uh, now, I mentioned about lift station six, lift station six is our last, uh, 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 station that we have. That's the final station, station that pumps over to the river. We are those, we, we get all our samples with, from lift station six, the state must approve those samples for the, be even pumped to the stations, the station six over to the river, you're right, you never pump anything over to the city, over to, to the river, that's, that's, that's not, uh, uh, passed by the state.
Uh, Mr. Carter, if, if, if I may also, is the quality of the city's water that discharged better than the Mississippi River itself?
Uh, yes, it, 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 it has been, been, uh, told that it is.
The water you're referring to has been treated before it's pumped into the Mississippi River.
Yes, sir, we have, it's what, what they call detention time.
Right.
You have a detention time i- i- in your lagoons.
That's in downtown, that's down the southern part.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've been down there.
Over on forty-four.
Right.
All right, you have, you have detention time, and when it passes detention time, it goes through, through your lift station six, we sample it, uh, three times a week. Uh, and then you do a quarterly sample only.
Yeah.
So they, yeah, it is, it is definitely sampled, uh, and Mayor say, he was right about that, we don't, we don't send any, any raw sewage over to, to the river.
Right, thank you. Any other questions or comments, Mr. Carter? Or? Or? Okay, well, I, I think I speak for, uh, uh, all of us when I say that we. Uh, regret the inconvenience to everybody on the West Helena Water System tonight. And, uh, that we hope this, uh, what we, we've been asked to ask our water users to be, to use conservation methods. So that we can get water back in the tank. And, um, and resolve this problem expeditiously, and I wish I could give, many people have asked me about a time, I wish I could do that. I can't, based on people that know a lot more about this than I do, uh, I can't, I can't honestly give a time. Of course, our goal or our desire would be that, that this plan tonight. Uh, works, and our guys will be down there all night working on it, um, that we can flush those. Filters out and get the system working like it's intended to work. And the aerator can be repaired and, and we can move on, but in the meantime, uh, we have people in boil water, but also people that can't even get water to boil. And, um, I just want to extend, uh, our regrets, apologies, um, for the inconvenience that they're facing. Tonight, and, uh, tomorrow too, for that matter, uh, for some who cancel things, and then we have our businesses. Uh, who use water, um, who suffer, so we regret that inconvenience, and, um, I just didn't want to let this issue go without saying that. Uh, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, but, Mr. Mayor, may I address a couple of things, please?
Sure.
Okay, uh, we've been on the call now an hour, and I said, I would like to council entertain, table everything except for the budget till Tuesday. And I just want to explain also, the mayor issued an emergency order, which is when, within his sound power was, uh, according to Arkansas statute. Uh, some of y'all accident text messages, but Arkansas Code, I'll tell you the section twelve seventy-five one oh eight. The class that the chief executive officer may issue an executive order, uh, declaring an emergency. And it cannot last longer than a hundred and twenty days, during that timeframe, the mayor is authorized to do, uh, whatever it needs to address the emergency. So while the council is, uh, the council is going back and forth, anything that he needs to do to fix this water situation is authorized to do. So long as we have the money, because it also waives the limitations under the statute, any ordinance. Uh, including but not limited to zoning, subdivision regulations, budget code, fire code, sanitation, sewer. Or any other regulatory type ordinance, uh, uh, if it impedes the emergency, then he has a right to go forward and get whatever he needs done. And so as it relates to the water, uh, we still would, would come back and do a play competitive bid waiver, but whatever he needs to do to fix the water. So long as the city has the money and the city council budgeted, up until, up until Monday, you operate on last year's budget, so as long, as long as he has the money on last year's budget. He can fix it however he needs to fix it, and then the council come back and, and affirm it. Uh, after Monday, the new budgets, you need to consider those things, but out of money's the cost, and I still would, uh, want to waive any competitive bidding. But if you want to read on the, the emergency powers of the mayor or any others, chief executive officer, you can go to Arkansas Code, I'll tell you the section twelve seventy-five one oh eight. He's operating within his authority as mayor to declare emergency, and, uh, uh, mu- many of your codes are waived. Uh, during this time period, uh, his order must state how long he's declaring an emergency for, and I think that would be dictated upon how long it takes to resolve it. Uh, but it cannot extend beyond a hundred and twenty days, I just wanted to give that to you because you all had this, this discussion by text earlier today. Actually, what does that mean when he said he declared an emergency, uh, when you're asking about a boil order, so I wanted to address that tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
No, that was very helpful, thanks for that clarification. And as a practical matter, what it means is that the, we're bringing everything we can to bear. Um, to fix this problem and resume safe water, and, and I want to emphasize two things that I'm. This is not involving Helena, and I'm sure you've already gotten a lot of calls, we want to remind people. If you're in what was the city of Helena or still is the east side, uh, water system, which is the, uh, Helena, you are not affected at all. Totally separate system. That's one thing. The second thing is, uh, we're doing, there, there is no indication, there's no, as far as I know, Mr. Carter, unless something's happened, I'm not aware of. There's been no, uh, indication of any, um. Uh, unsafe matters with the water, really. It's an abundance of caution because of water pressure and the water level that we're issuing a boil order, not because anybody has found anything. Uh, and in fact, just the opposite, we have not found anything that, that would, uh, be unsafe. However, because of the conditions, there is that possibility, so to be an abundance of caution, the Health Department advises. Mr. Carter advises that, that we do this, and I guess there is a third thing, as a practical matter, what, the pump, uh, station eight at Cement Plant. Mr. Luckett. Um, Mr. Wallen, their services are going to be invoiced, I don't know what those costs are right now, or I would share them. But we just could not wait because of the emergency pressing issue here, so. I just wanted to say that, is that, Mr. Carter, you want to add to that?
That's it.
Okay, alrighty, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Carter, Mr. Uh, Valley, you, you wanted, you suggested a motion to.
The remainder of the agenda other than the budget, I, I think what's critical right now is we had February first to pass the budget. And, uh, the other things, we've been in the meeting for hours, and it's been very helpful, I'm not saying we've been wasting time. But I think we need to focus on the budget, so, so the city council can resolve an issue that, we can take up everything else Tuesday, because you have a regular meeting on Tuesday, the second.
Need a question about that. I'm just trying to see if there is anything you couldn't wait. I don't necessarily see anything, Ms. Ramsey or Mr. Turner or anybody else. That can't wait until Tuesday?
No, sir, nothing on the agenda, except the budget.
Okay, so any discussion about Mr. Valley's proposal that we table the rest of the agenda until Tuesday and take up the budget? And I guess the budget now, that's going to be, um, it has to be, is that, if I'm not mistaken, is that not Monday? We have to do that?
Yes, sir, midnight Monday, it's on or before, uh, February first, so they have to midnight, they have to eleven fifty-nine PM on Monday.
What is the budget's, uh, resolution number?
It's going to be number two.
I think we, uh, we were still having discussions, uh, about the budget, uh, Mr. St. Columbia, and, uh, nobody has, uh. Um, uh, adopted Mr. Uh, Valley's motion.
I got, I got the budget and went over it, uh. No, I don't see anymore that we need to discuss, and we kicked that can around a while.
Well, I, I understand, we, 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 there are still more questions, you know, admin is the last thing we need to discuss, so, I mean. We, we were still, we, you know, we're still talking about it, so I feel there are more questions that I have.
I, I have a question, do we have to, um, make a motion to table the rest of it? The rest of the agenda?
Yes.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Crockett moves that we table the agenda until the next regular council meeting on Tuesday, February second. Uh, there's a second, um, Mr. Heatherly, I believe, any other questions or comments about the most? If not, call row.
Davis?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
St. Columbia?
Mo.
Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Etherly?
Yes.
Five yes, one no.
Motion passes, and so I guess the last thing is that we will meet on Monday, uh, six o'clock, Monday for.
I think, I think it's been a misunderstanding of what the motion was, the motion was to table everything except for the, uh, budget. I think there's been a misunderstanding to what the, uh, motion was.
Well, the, 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 but, the, the agenda that's being tabled, Mr. Valley said would be picked up.
Yes, I say everything, to table everything except for the budget.
Well, the budget's not on the agenda, so the motion was to table the agenda, Tuesday, and I was about to say. We would have our budget meeting, I'm assuming, Monday at six o'clock, is that what we're thinking, Ms. Ramsey, Mr. Turner? Because Monday's the first.
Well, the budget is on the agenda, under the treasurer's report, says treasurer's financials and twenty twenty-one budget.
I thought it was on the.
I, I know, that's what, Mary, you told me to wait until we got to the budget.
Well, the, the plan was not to talk about the budget under Mr. Turner's treasurer's report, but.
That's not the discussion, now, the discussion is, my motion was to table the remainder of the agenda with the exclusion of the twenty twenty-one budget until February first.
So you want the entire agenda to be on the, um, with the exclusion of, say that one more, let, let, say that, make a.
My motion is to.
This one, this one makes a substitute motion, states your motion.
My motion is to table the remainder of the agenda with the exclusion of the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one budget until Tuesday, February second.
Okay, you've heard the motion, is there a second?
We already voted on it.
We did.
Well, this, this is a substitute motion.
No, it's not a substitute motion, the motion was just, uh, you, you, uh, did wrong, that's, that's what I said at first.
There's a motion on the table, is, did somebody second?
There's not a motion on the table, I told you what my motion was.
Okay. Uh, well, now you, you've lost me, uh, so there's no motion on the table, so.
Mayor, Clark, could you read my motion back, please?
Ms. Crockett, uh, do you want to have a meeting Monday on the budget? We can meet on the budget Monday, I don't, I'm not opposed to that.
Nobody said anything about meeting on the budget on Monday, may I, so you getting ahead of yourself?
But I'm asking you, you wanted to.
No, listen, Mayor, Mayor, let me finish my statement, please. Mr. Valley may be suggesting that we table everything that was remaining on the agenda. With the exclusion of the twenty twenty-one budget until February the second, and that was the motion, so I don't know how you were saying that the whole agenda was.
Okay, so do you want to make another motion?
No. Why? We've already voted on that motion.
Well, you're disagreeing with the motion that was passed, so do we want to have a budget meeting Monday or some other day, or, I'm, I'm asking you what you want to do on the budget? That's the question for the council, when do you want to meet, really, I guess is the question?
Are we not going to discuss the budget tonight?
It's up to you.
That was the motion.
That's what I voted for.
But what is the will of the body, just, just talk, because it's, it's, we're wasting a lot of time and there's a lot of confusion, so. The, the suggestion by Mr. Valley was that we pick up the regular council agenda Tuesday night at the regular council meeting, we table that. And that we discuss the budget, I think, Mr. Valley, you meant Monday, the first, or at least we had until Monday, the first, to approve a budget. And then my question was, when do you want to meet on the budget, and I asked, do you want to meet Monday at six o'clock? I never really got an answer, we don't have to meet, meet then, but as you know, we, as Mr. Valley said, we have to approve a budget by the end of Monday. That's what's before the council, so what is your pleasure?
Great, I, I, I think the discussion got off when, when you and I, may I start talking about when we have to pass a budget, but. What my, my suggestion to the body was to table everything else and just get down to the budget, so that, so that if they're going to pass tonight, pass, if you're not discussing, so we can get this resolved before February first. That was, that was my intent, and I may not have made that clear enough for everybody on the call, but, uh, I don't know what the motion stated, and that's why I was waiting on Ms. Ramsey to see how she recorded the motion. Because Ms. Uh, Ms. Crockett made the motion, but I had stopped, stepped away when she made the motion, so I don't know what exactly the, how the motion was framed. So I would defer to Ms. Crockett, uh, not Ms. Crockett, Ms. Ms. Ramsey, as to what's, how she recorded it.
Mr. Valley, it says, Mr. Valley asks that everything except the budget be tabled until the regular meeting on February the second, twenty twenty-one.
So was that the motion made?
Yes, sir.
I misunderstood it too.
You know what, it would be easier if somebody just made another motion to have this discussion, so does anybody want to make another motion? Or does anybody want to make a suggestion about when to meet on the budget, it really doesn't matter to me. It's up to you, with your budget.
Me personally, I think that with the way that the, the, uh, motion was made, I think we're supposed to be discussing the budget right now.
Ms. Crockett would like to continue to discuss the budget tonight.
I'm moving, we meet on it tonight, get it over with.
Okay, Mr. St. Columbia makes a motion that we discuss the budget tonight.
Mayor, we don't need a motion, we've already made that motion.
But he made one anyway.
Okay, 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 I'm through with it.
Is there a second? Yeah, motion does for like, for a second, so, but what is the will of the body?
I think everybody's been, uh, willing to proceed with the discussion. Since Mr. Val, since Mr. Valley made motion and the Crockett, uh, or made the suggestion of the motion, Ms. Crockett made it. Um, I understand that some people didn't understand it, but I think most people did understand it, and I guess you just open up the floor and let those who have comments, questions, or, um, issues to, to present those now.
Anybody else want to discuss it? Anybody else want to discuss whether we continue tonight or do it another time? I think we've heard from three people. Anybody, I think, anybody else?
I, I don't, I don't think whether to discuss it tonight is an issue, I think everybody's just waiting for the discussion to proceed.
Well. Is anybody, let me put it a different way, because not everybody has chimed in on this question. The, uh, does, so, uh, I, I'm assuming then, what, if there's no objection, then what you want to do is dispense with the business tonight until Tuesday night. But continue to stay in a meeting tonight and discuss the budget, that's what I'm hearing, is there any disagreement or objection to that, let me ask it that way? Okay, hearing no objection, we will continue the meeting, and we will limit it to the budget. So I'm going to turn that over now to Mr. Turner, uh, to discuss the budget, and, uh, I'll rejoin you here shortly. Mr. Turner, are you on?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, whatever the council, I'm, I mean, the council, yeah, the council just needs to.
Ms. Turner, I'm basically just turning the gavel over to you temporarily to discuss the budget, take questions.
Yeah, I'm saying that, uh, I'm just waiting on the council's direction, on how they want to proceed with, uh, if there are any changes that they would like to make. I, I've given them some changes, uh, that I did over the weekend, and I sent them to them yesterday. And so they've had time to look at it, are there any, is there anything else that they would like to discuss, or if there are any other changes that they would like to make? Or if there are any other changes that they would like to make?
Uh, and add me and Mr. Turner, uh, we need to talk about that, and I think, uh, there's some changes that be made in, in, uh, in that. Uh, you know, we really need to, uh, discuss all of that. I'm, I'm sure there, there's more people on the call with me that want to handle that, but I would like to go back to, uh, the, what we were talking about earlier. I was trying to be, uh, nice that could, but I was talking about the police department, and the mayor said he's turning the gavel over to you, but he's still on the call, but I want some answers to this question here. Uh, if- So, you know, we was talking about the police department, and you was telling me the police department was, uh, one point, was it one point? How to make sure I was right, except there, as you were talking. Police department, police department. You said two point six? Million, Mr. Turner? Or one, or one police-
I was sorry, I was muted. You, you mean last year's budget or this year's?
Yeah, la- last year's budget for the police department.
Last year's budget, like I told you, two point six, because I took out what those-
Right, right, right.
But, but, what, what, what it ended up being was two point seven million.
Two point seven million. Okay, so, two point seven million. Now, you know, we had all those salaries in the budget, right? So can somebody tell, uh, the council and listening, uh, audience, what happened to, what, what happened to the, the money for those, uh, officers that we had that we didn't feel, those positions that we didn't feel? What happened to that money? Does anybody know that? If you got two point seven million dollars budgeted, it won't have maybe eight officers? So the positions you didn't feel, where's that money?
Money, it, it wasn't spent. It remained in the, whatever, by the end of the year, that money wasn't spent, and it remained in checking account.
So, 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 okay, can you, can you, can somebody, if it remain there, where? I mean- Okay, so, so, so we, we got that money for all, for those. So how did we spend two point seven million dollars in? And those, the two point seven, wha- what?
The budget was two point seven million. That's what the budget was. We spent two, eight million, though. We didn't spend the entire budget.
Okay, two point eight million, so it's going up, so-
No, the two, two point oh eight, okay. We actually spent two million eighty-nine thousand dollars and two million eighty-nine thousand dollars is what we actually spent. Two oh eight-
Two hundred and-
Two zero eight nine.
Okay, I got you, so.
And the budget was two million seven hundred thousand.
Okay, so, still, still, we, if we did not feel those positions, where, where, where's the money? Then, I mean, uh, and we di, and we didn't spend it, show, I mean, if we didn't spend it, we, when people saying, you know, defund the police department, if you didn't feel the positions, the money should be, the money should, we, we should have more than what we, what we said earlier, that the, um, the money that this habit applied for the city to get, the, the CARES Act money, we should have, we should have way more than that.
We have, uh-
So we should have, so right now, so right now, we should have five hundred thousand dollars in the bank. And we, and, and, because I'm trying to get, this is what I'm trying to get, you know, when people say defund, defund, we, we should have five hundred thousand dollars for those officers that we did not hire. We should have five hundred thousand, not, not what you, not the two hundred thousand dollars. We should have five hundred thousand dollars, because we didn't fill those positions. And you said overtime, you said overtime was a hundred, we allocated a hundred thousand dollars, it came to a hundred seventy-four thousand dollars, and then a hundred and seventy-four thousand, three hundred eighty-six thousand, zero six. So, uh, uh, I'm trying to see whether, we, we should have some money. We, we should, we should have a, a, a bigger surplus than we have, uh, the, the projected on the, on this budget. We should have way more than that, and my question is, where is, where is the money? We didn't feel those positions. We always said the money goes back to general fund. We always said, if you don't need something, you can appropriate money to it. If, if you don't hire this person, you can appropriate to, uh, get more funding. Now, I'm, I'm, I'm just, I'm just trying to, you know, maybe in America, that's, for those positions that we did not feel, that's five hundred thousand dollars.
You have, uh, you have, we have three hundred thousand dollars in general fund.
That comes from where?
You have, excuse me?
Well, I mean, the three hundred thousand dollars, right, that comes from what, what we had with, with, uh, CARES Act, right? The, the money, the money we received, we, we received four hundred eighty-six thousand dollars from, from, uh, CARES Act, right?
No, you, the three hundred thousand dollars is not the CARES Act money. We, the CARES Act money was moved to the, uh, reserve account at the Bank of Ozarks.
So, so, okay, so-
Yeah, three hundred thousand dollars in cash and, uh, in our general fund, and we have seven hundred thousand at the Bank of Ozarks.
Okay, so in the general fund-
And it, that was at the end of December.
Okay, so, it, you know, okay, so you move, you move that money to the Bank of Ozarks, right?
Yes.
What, what, okay, so still, we toured that, if we got, in, in the general fund, it's three hundred thousand. We still two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand short from what we su- supposed to have with the police department if we didn't feel those positions.
You got seven hundred thousand dollars, you got a million dollars in general fund. The, the Bank of Ozarks is general fund revenue, that's just separate account, that's just a different checking account. But they are, they are general fund.
I, I thought what was, I thought, I thought you said that money was used to pay the box of bills. I thought that was what I heard.
I didn't, I didn't say that the box of bills were paid. You know, that was an issue we had in two thousand and eighteen, I think, whatever year the audit gave us that going concern.
Right.
So I mentioned something about a box of bills, but I don't, what I think what I mentioned was when I said that, uh, and last year or in prior years, what whatever year that we had over budgeted, we had a budget for the police, uh, salaries, and we didn't use all of those positions, and you asked, what did that money, what was that money used for? And I was saying that that money was used to pay, help pay that box of bills. That was in twenty eighteen or twenty nineteen. I can't remember, I think it was twenty eighteen.
I, I, I didn't, I didn't know that, because, you know, w- w- we were, we, we had, we had offices, and we had a, a lot of overtime as well. Being, see, I mean, my que, that, that's my whole thing, if, if, if we didn't feel those positions, because right then, we still, we still got probably what, five officers on the street, and we're trying to get to, what, twenty-five? Because you remember, Mr. St. Columbia, Mr. St. Columbia can remember as well as anybody, you know, you start with, said, the people, we, we got, and I'm not picking on the police department, I'm saying, we are, we, we, we need more officers, we need more officers, and I'm trying to be, how, why we not giving them? If you had all this money left over. I'm just trying to get, show, show me. The mayor could, yeah, show me where his money is.
But Mr. Franklin went up-
I mean, because-
Mr. Franklin.
Yes, I, I, I just-
I couldn't hear you, I couldn't hear you, you were going in and out, so I, I couldn't hear you, so I don't know if you hear me or not, so I'm sorry.
I mean, uh, yeah, uh,
I, I can't hear you. Mr. Franklin, let me-
We have none. It is, it is, it is, we need more, we need more, we need- What, what? Hold on, I'm gonna, let me, let me-
Mr. Franklin, for the last three-
Can you hear me now?
I can hear anything you say for the last three minutes, three or four minutes.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
What, I'm, I'm sorry about that. I had to take these earbuds out, but with the police department, right?
Yes.
If, if we didn't hire those positions, we should have almost five hundred thousand dollars. We, we only have about seven, well, because we got two officers on leave, so we have about four officers on the street right about now. So I'm trying to see and look at the overtime, and how, how, how much money do we have? For not filling those, for not filling those about ten, eleven slots that we have? Because we ha, we have a couple, we, I, I can go down the list of people who have left in the last six months. And we had, we had two on leave, so we only have, you, you, you have CID, eternal affairs, chief, assistant chief. And probably, we probably got, they, you know, people that's in the office, so you have only probably five folks on the street, so we, we, we have, we have enough money. As you say, as y'all, is, is it shows we have enough, why haven't we hired anybody? We got, we, we got, we got this money here, five hundred, you, you said, I said, we should save five hundred thousand dollars, right?
Yeah, that's what you, yeah.
But that, that, right, right, with, with, if you, if you add all the positions that we didn't feel-
No, what I'm saying is, Mr. Franklin, you, that's, when I, I, I wasn't being, what I'm saying is, you said that we should have saved five hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
And so we should have saved something. I'm just not putting a number on, because I'm not looking at the numbers right now. But we should have, we, there were some savings, and what, what I was addressing with, uh, Mr. Eath early, I think that may have been in Tuesday's meeting or the meeting before that, uh, the meeting the week prior, when he asked about the box of bills. And I think what I was saying was that we had, oh, we had budgeted for these positions. We didn't feel those positions, and those savings, that budget surplus from not, from not filling those positions helped us to pay that box of bills in twenty nineteen. I think that was the year it helped us pay that box of bills in twenty nineteen. So we were able to, uh, overcome that going concern and, uh, bring the city back up to, uh, current, bring the city current with those, uh, old vendor payoffs. So starting in twenty twenty, we budgeted again, and twenty twenty, we budgeted for thirty-two positions. I don't know exactly how many we had during the year, uh, but we didn't fill all those positions, and so we also had another budget surplus uh, regarding the police salary, and so that money has not been spent. That money is helping to contribute to the money that we have in the general fund and the money that we have in the Bank of Ozarks. So we have about a million, we have a million, about a million dollars in general funds at the end of twenty twenty. We have three hundred thousand dollars in a general fund, you have seven hundred thousand dollars in the Bank of Ozarks at the end of, uh, twenty twenty.
Again, so-
So the reason why they're not hiring, I, I couldn't tell you that. I don't know what, if they have a problem with the applicants, the number of applicants, the qualifications of the applicants, I'm not sure. I think he, he's muted right now. Well-
Mr. Franklin.
Yeah, he's muted. Ms. Davis.
It's not me, it's me.
I had a question. I'm not trying to cut him off. I'm not sure if he was done speaking, or if he was trying to get, move or get his phone back.
Looks like he's muted right now.
Okay, going back to the administration page.
Yes, ma'am.
I see where, um, on that last document that you sent.
Okay.
Where the human resource director, the money was taken out. I see there's still a number one, but why was the money taken out?
The money was taken out because, uh, within the mayor's proposed budget, the mayor had no plans on hiring a human resources person. As far as personnel, he was planning on contracting with a company, and so these are for salaries, and so, uh, the mayor didn't plan on hiring anybody, so we didn't put, I didn't put anything in as far as salaries for a humans, human resources director.
Okay, we discussed that in one of the previous meetings, and I thought at the end of that discussion, we agreed that we would, uh, open the position back up and have someone. So I think the last uh, document that you gave us was in there. This last one that I received on yesterday, it was not. Let me go back. Yes, well, no.
I don't think that ever, now, if I didn't admit, I may have misunderstood you guys, or didn't hear anyone tell me to put it back in there, but I don't recall putting it back in there, but I can put it back in if, if that's what you want.
Okay, yes, I think, I, I mean, I do.
Okay.
But we did discuss it.
Yeah, you discussed it.
And, and I asked him about opening the, the position back up, and he said that he would, so.
Okay, yeah, you did discuss it. I just didn't think to put it back in the budget. Let me find out how much it was last year. Let me look at last year's budget then. Confirm with you guys if that's the same amount. I think it was around thirty-eight thousand dollars.
It was.
Okay.
Thirty-eight, nine, forty-five.
Okay. Well, it would have to be a base pay, so I, if, if I told you that's what the base pay was, and let me see what base pay was. I don't know if I told you that was base pay or what the last director was making. Uh, but base pay base pay is thirty-two thousand. So I put it in there for thirty-two thousand, right? If that's you and the other councilmen agree to it. Is that correct? Anyone else?
Yes, thirty-two.
Yeah.
Base pay.
Yes, ma'am, that's base pay, yes, ma'am.
Please add that back.
Okay. Okay, I got it in there. Is there anything else?
Uh, Mr. Turner.
Yes, ma'am.
In administration from twelve, one, two, one, twenty-seven, I see there have been a there have been numerous amounts of increase- there have been numerous amounts of increases. Is it possible to go back to where it was on twelve, one? Not stating that, not saying that we, we, you know, we won't ever change that or it won't be changed, but in order to pass the budget, is it possible to take it back to where it was? Because it's several salaries that have been changed.
Okay, so those, those, so you don't, the proposed salaries, you want the proposed salaries taken back to what they currently are? Cause those were just what, what was proposed. So you want to make the proposed salaries the current salary?
Yes.
Okay, with the, are you, you guys still considering the three percent cost of living increase?
Yes.
Okay, so you want those included with the three percent cost of living?
Yes.
Okay.
And then at some point after we pass this budget, we can begin working on that. Begin working on those, uh, increases.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I had one more question whenever you are ready.
Yeah, I'm ready. I'm just making notes right now. That's, that's, that'll take a couple of that'll take, not a lot of time, but I'm just, I'm taking notes right now, so I'm not adjusting right now. Yes, ma'am. Okay, I'm ready.
The minimum wage increase, the people, the, the, the employees that are to receive that.
Yes, ma'am.
Are they not receiving, I, I can't, I didn't see where they were receiving the minimum wage increase and the column?
Okay, the, the way I was, I, I thought about it the, uh, couple of days ago, and, and the way, it's, it's kind of like I may have been stating it wrong, cause I said no, but in actuality we propose to give everybody the three percent, so but the three percent, if they made ten dollars an hour and the three percent went on the team. And so that would be like ten dollars, that would be like thirty cents, that's ten percent of, uh, uh, let me see. I think ten dollars and thirty cents, so uh, that's not minimum wage, so we had the, 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 the three percent cola wasn't enough to push them up to minimum wage.
Okay, so the minimum wage is eleven dollars, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So would the column not be up to eleven? Yes.
The, the, the cost of living would have, we were putting the cost of living increase on the twenty, twenty salary. Whatever they made in twenty twenty, we were giving them the three percent cost of living. But that is not enough, that, that wouldn't push them up to minimum wage.
That's why I'm saying.
So what I'm saying is the minimum, everybody got three percent, but the three percent wasn't enough. So the, the minimum wage was in addition to, to the three percent that we put on there.
So it just depends on how you look at it, which one comes first?
Yep.
I mean, if you did the minimum wage, which is, um, mandated. Then would you not add the cost of living from that?
Well, I was thinking about it a, a couple of days ago, it's the cost of living was going to be on the twenty, twenty salary. The cost of living was applied to what you made in twenty twenty. The cost of, the minimum wage increase didn't go into effect to January first. And that's just, that's just my rationale. That's the way I look at it. You can look at it any kind of way that you want to, but that, that was part of the rationale behind it. But it's, it's, it's well within the city council, uh, right? This is your budget, so if you want to put the three percent on top of the minimum wage increase, that's, that's city council prerogative.
So council members, what do you all think?
I personally would like to see it put on the new minimum wage, the eleven dollars.
Okay.
I would like to see it put on the new minimum wage as well.
Yeah, I can hear you, Mr. Franklin.
All right.
Come here.
So right, right now I have the admin, I guess I'm still on. Right now I have all the admin. Well, not all of admin, but everybody who had those increases in the budget that were above the cost of living and the minimum wage, we want to take all of those salaries back to last year's plus the three percent. And we want to add a three percent cost of living adjustment on top of the minimum wage, uh, increase. So those are the two, uh, changes that I have to the budget so far. So I want to make sure that that was correct.
Mr. Turner.
Uh, yes, ma'am.
On the, in the police department.
Okay.
Where there's, um, the CID case management, manager, I'm sorry. Well, yeah. Twenty, twenty salary and then the proposed salary, I guess with the, uh, cola. I think, I, I don't know if that's an error. There's a, a decrease there instead of an increase. Unless the numbers have been switched. You see where I?
What page is that?
Page four, I'm sorry.
No, I, I, my page was out of uh, out of order, let me see. Yeah, that's not, okay, well, the
The proposed is less than the salary, is, is what I'm saying. I don't know if that's an error.
Yeah, let me, let me see what the correct numbers are, um.
I mean, I'm sure there's something that can be fixed out. I just noticed it.
Yeah. The that number where it says, you see, the one that says total proposed salary. Okay, and the twenty, twenty salary is correct, that the one in the middle where it said proposed salary, that number in the middle, that's, 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 that's not right.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, the too far the right one should be the same. But I, I'll make the change.
Okay.
Anything else anybody can think of?
Yes, sir. When, when will we have a printed copy with the revisions?
Okay, I told you Friday last time when I was trying to get some other information, but uh, I can, these changes, like, it, it won't take any time at all. I can get these to you by, before noon tomorrow. If these are the only changes, I can get this to you by noon tomorrow, probably even before that.
And if I understand, uh, the requested revisions, uh, Ms. Franklin, Ms. uh, Ms. Davis wanted um, salaries, salaries placed at the twenty, twenty level. And three percent, uh, on the new minimum wage for, for minimum wage employees. Was there any other revision that was requested? Did I miss something?
I don't know if it was necessarily a revision, but she did mention that she wanted everybody to get the three percent code.
Well, I guess it would be revised to the extent it goes to the, um, the new minimum wage level employees. So I guess that's two changes. Are there any other changes?
And Mr. uh, human resources, put back in it, at base pay thirty-two thousand.
Okay, let me write that down. Human resources back in base, back in there. What was the level of that? Thirty-one?
Thirty-two.
I know I'm soliciting comments, but so we can, so we can, uh, move on. Are there any other changes or revisions that anyone else is asking for? Then if, if not, Mr. Turner, if you would, uh, memorialize those into a revised document and then we'll expect to get it by tomorrow, I guess, at some point.
Yes, sir.
Everybody will review it and we need to meet once again to adopt it. Any suggestions about another meeting day? I'm available all the way up until midnight on February first.
I may be able to get, I mean, if these are the only changes, I can swing, I can, if these are the changes, I can get you these changes. I get these changed to you tonight. This, this, this doesn't, this, this won't take long. And I, I, I hate to suggest it, but if you guys want to meet tomorrow, that's fine with me.
You can get it to me tonight.
Well, I, I'll, I'll email it to the, and we'll make sure you get it first thing in the morning. But anytime, anytime from Friday till Monday, anytime you guys want to meet, that's fine with me.
I suggest Monday.
What time's crack?
Five, five thirty. Six?
For normally, we meet at six and it didn't work out last, last time. We tried to meet before six. Uh, I think everybody's normally used to logging on at six. I'll just suggest six o'clock up. I'll suggest six o'clock also unless, and, and Ms., Ms. Davis, Mr. Franklin. I think Mr. St. Columbia is gone. Ms. Ford, is that okay? Six o'clock on, uh, six o'clock on Monday?
That, that's perfect for me. Thank you.
And I think Mr. Franklin is gone. Ms. Davis, six o'clock, okay?
That's fine with me.
Six o'clock it is.
And even though we're meeting at six o'clock on Monday, feel free to comment anytime before that, any, any questions? Or changes that you guys want to make.
I move your journal.
I'll second that.
Everybody have a good evening.